This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board.
Everyone, we have reconvened after our closed session. The board has taken no action during closed session. And so we will start our open session tonight with our pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance leader is Alex Wang, the third grade student from Roosevelt Elementary School. Principal Dolman writes that he is a very patriotic young man who always has shown a great deal of pride for his country. Alex also demonstrates our school's core values of pride, respect, and responsibility consistently each day, leading by example for our other students. Alex, thank you for being here. If you'd like to come forward, those of you who are willing and able, please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the letter of the United States of America. We do not operate with a rigid stance, one nation, unified, and with justice strong.
Thank you, Alex. Next item of business tonight is the adoption of tonight's agenda. Could I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda? And a second? Moved and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion?
I'd like to make, sir, I'd like to make a motion to amend to strike 8.2 from the superintendent's consent agenda, adoption of the 2022-2023 school calendar.
There's a motion to amend to approve to strike 8.2 adopt 2022-2022 school calendar. Is there a second? I'll check it. Moved and seconded, discussion on the amendments, Commissioner Zer.
Right. So the first, the first reason was I'm uncertain, I want some clarity as whether it really needs to be on our agenda. If it, if it is something that I feel like the board has reserved for our consideration, then I think we, I went to ourselves to have a discussion about it. I, in hearing for candidate forum, I had an opportunity to connect with some community members. And multiple times in those connections with community members, the topic of Martin Luther King Junior Day came up and a question about why our staff are in school on that day when our students are not. And I, if, I mean, I'm not sure how to advocate for those concerns. If, if this is the place to have that discussion, then I want to, I want to have it properly. I want to have it in the correct way. And if it's not the place to have that discussion, and perhaps we want to advocate for that as part of OE2, we're in a different place, then I, then I want to give us the opportunity to have that. But I would like to stop this for now until we can decide. At least I can, I can gain some clarity and the board can gain some clarity whether this is something that we need to be, be discussing and then we need to have a discussion if that's really
Are there comments or questions regarding the amendment?
Commissioner Lyons? Is there any legal obligation or is there any statutory reason why this calendar does come this? It's a part of the handbook or? Why, why does it come?
So I think that's a reasonable question. Superintendent Johnson, you can add in it in a moment if you have other. Certainly, Commissioner Zer let me know that he wanted to take this action. I did look through our, certainly we have not reserved this. In my mind, it is an operational decision. We did, in at least putting it on the agenda originally, we just consulted with triple followers in Altoona who also are using coherent governance. And this is how they had approached it. So we said, let's do it like this. I think we still, I, I, I will vote for Commissioner Zer's amendment because I think we do need to have some clarity. And if we are going to take this on as a board decision, then I think we need to approach it and we need to adjust our policy to call for that. I, I'm not aware of any legal reason that we have to approve it. I don't know if you are, I don't, if you are not, Superintendent Johnson.
It was my understanding and talking with other superintendents that there is a, there is a component of the calendar that does need to be approved by the board. It just so happens that if it's coherent governance, it's considered an operational and, and some boards take it off the agenda and discuss like, you know, like we're doing right now. Where it's the approval, if you're not in a coherent governance model, the board adds on that. So. I can't get further clarification, but that's, that was my understanding and speaking with other superintendents.
Doctor Johnson? Again, I would support the amendment that we're removing. I just forget the time. Discussion continues to go towards seeking clarity and adding it to a meeting. Thank you.
Doctor Decker?
I need to hear a little bit more about deadlines to what, that wants for approval of the calendar, what kind of disadvantages there could be for, for postponed.
I don't know if Mandy, I know you worked on the calendar this year. I don't know if you want to answer that or Superintendent Johnson?
I can, yes. Certainly deadline, I would say.
The sooner that we're able to make that available to the community families and us as a staff is, is helpful. So it would concern me to not have an approved calendar. Pushing it too far to the end of February and move to March.
So to clarify, there isn't a hard deadline. It's, it's more of the, but we, if, if it's pulled from tonight, we need to, you know, act diligently to do this as quickly as possible to get that clarity. Is that?
Correct. Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
So when the board approves the calendar, then no changes are made to the calendar after that point unless they come back to the board. Is that a safe assumption?
Sure.
Okay. So would it be even a notice item with a deadline? Where the calendar is, I, I've been asked by a whole number of people where the calendar is recently. And I even emailed the superintendent with apologies, saying, I don't know if it's jolly with this, but I'm getting a lot of people that are asking where it is. It's normally posted by now. I'm concerned about deadlines. I, I would guess that there's a contractual component to this and maybe I, I don't know if Kate can say, no, there's not. But when employee contract starts and ends connected to the calendar and the whole idea that once the calendar is in place and acknowledged by the board that it doesn't change after that point. So those are the reasons why I would think it would be presented to the board. As long as there's no statutory or legal issues, when there is a notification, I would be fine with the board actually not voting. But I can see reasons why it would be brought to us and presented in, in this kind of general format.
Commissioner Zer? And then, sorry, let's go to Commissioner Clements, who hasn't had his chance yet, and then we'll go to you, Commissioner Zer.
So is it fair to say, Commissioner Zer, your questioning about the calendar is on that one particular date? Or the, or the other items?
Well, it, it was more, is it, is, is it my job to have a, is, is it our job to, to have a say in it? And then if it is, we have to do our due diligence. And I, as, I don't feel that I could do, that I would be doing justice to the people who I just spoke to. If I didn't, if I didn't advocate for something that I felt was a significant issue to a few of our communities, particularly our community color.
So the nature of my questioning was, we're concerned about one particular, one particular day in the calendar. The calendar is proxy for making it a suit enough on that question. Then are we able to ask for a resolution? Honoring that day and so for our employees is that within our governance model to, to do. It's in order to say the board has said that we are going to consider this a holiday for district staff, for example. That would be a way to call that question very specifically. And it would be, it would carry forward for future years.
But the question that Commissioner Zer has raised is, is this, you know, that we don't have clarity. She doesn't feel that we have clarity right now about where this falls. And we need that clarity both to ensure what's our statutory responsibility and then how do we approach it in policy? In addition to wanting to bring the feedback that she's got from the community and, you know, perhaps if we, you know, even if the district would go forward with having staff, you know, at work on MLK, perhaps there's an explanation of what will they be doing that day or, or why, you know, what's the rationale for why we've chosen to do this? That would be helpful for the board to be able to respond back and say, well, I hear, I hear what you're saying. This is the reasons that we know that they have chosen to, the district has chosen to do that.
And actually, I would interject by saying, you know, we could do that right now because there, there is that rationale. We have members in our executive team and administrative team who led that process with others. And I, you know, they could provide some of that rationale right now if, if you wish to hear.
I think, given the issue for me, the issue is, and we're just considering this amendment to strike it from tonight's agenda. The issue for me is one primarily of clarity on the, the action and policy. And once that's clarified, then we can combine that with feedback on that particular, you know, request or that particular information piece from the community in a, in a future vote. Or if it is not a vote, that part could be supplied and communicated at that time. So I, because I, for me, I want to know what, what our job is as a board and how to approach it first. And then I want the information on, you know, the feedback and advocacy that we hear from. Commissioner Zer?
So, uh, in, I want to be really respectful of the timeline. Like, I don't want to derail anything. I just want you guys to know that. Um, I just, I'm, I'm wondering if it's a decision that, that I'm just wondering if it's a decision that we need to make. And I
You mean tonight?
Tonight.
You, it is, you're, you could retract your motion. And if your second also retracted it, then you could, you know, we wouldn't have, but we're on the amendment right now.
Yeah.
But if, if that's your decision, I mean, that's one option. Something else to consider, I guess, in, in voting on the amendment itself.
I guess the, the point of, the point of wanting to strike it is because I would like to know where the advocacy point for the, the subject is for the community. Where, where do we have this conversation? Do we have it here right now with the school calendar? In which case we need to make a motion to pull it and, and discuss it probably before approval of it, correct? Rather than
Yeah, the, the process would have to be either retract this, um, this motion or fail this motion so that we don't remove it from the agenda entirely.
Right.
Then pull it from the consent agenda and discuss it individually.
And I don't, I don't think we know, I don't necessarily want to, I don't know that we necessarily want to do that this evening. Because what I would, I would like before we have that discussion is, is how do we want to actually consider this item on a yearly basis? And if this is how we want to do it, then I think that's fine. And, and the subject of MLK Day and the community concern around that and the advocacy that maybe I would like to bring forward is maybe not placed here. It's placed in OE2 or something, you know, along those lines. But I, until, I know this is something we actually do want to vote on and I do want to have a discussion on. I just, I would like to strike it until we can sort that out. So I'm, my motion's going.
Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will call the question. The motion is to amend the agenda for tonight to a strike item 8.2 adopt 2022-2023 school calendar. Terry, if you would please call the vote.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Zer?
Yes.
Commissioner Becca? Commissioner Clements?
Yes. Motion passes, we'll remove 8.2 from this evening. We are aware of, Mandy, you know, the required, we will, we will work with as much haste as we can to bring this back for approval as soon as possible. Once we have that clarity. And then Superintendent Johnson, I, I know you can provide that rationale for MLK. I'm sure the board would like that. And we'd like to communicate that as we go forward. All right. Uh, we will now return to the motion to approve tonight's agenda amended to remove 8.2. Is there any additional discussion on the motion? Call the question. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And opposed, when she carries. Move on then to tonight's recognition and Superintendent Johnson will turn it to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Nordine, board members, student representatives, executive team and guests. Tonight on 5.1, I'd like to recognize seven ECASD staff members who have either attained or maintained their National Board Certification in 2020 or 2021. Their dedication to achieving National Board Certification and meeting the high and rigorous standard of compost teaching of the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards is inspiring. Their hard work, flexibility, and commitment to the National Board Certification process in these toughest of times have paid off and their students are the beneficiaries. In 2020, Wendy Hanson, early childhood teacher at Prairie Ridge, certified as an early childhood through young adult with exceptional lead specialist. Also in 2020, Karen Wada, mathematics teacher at Zalang, extended her certification in early adolescence mathematics. In 2021, Elizabeth Westgate, fifth grade teacher at Lakeshore, certified as a middle childhood generalist. Also in 2021, four teachers extended their certification, Van Coop following. Elizabeth Dolman, mathematics teacher itself, who's certified as a middle childhood generalist. Charlene Kelly, family consumer ed teacher at North, who's certified in early adolescence through young adult, career in tech ed. Vance Mead, third grade teacher at Northwoods, who's certified as a middle childhood generalist. And Selena Smith-Ruder, French teacher at Lomrell, who's certified in early adolescence through young adulthood and world languages. Congratulations to all of you on this tremendous achievement. And secondly tonight, very important week for us, recognition of national school counselors week. National School Counseling Week is celebrated the first full week in February every year to highlight the tremendous impact that our school counselors have in helping students to achieve academic, social, and emotional and career success. This special week on our school counselors for the significant role they play in helping students examine their talents, strengths, abilities, interests, and to overcome adversity and reach new goals. All of our district school counselors are master level educators who work in professional partnerships with teachers, administration, community partners, and support personnel to provide an educational system where students can realize their true potential. As all educators focus their efforts on improving academic achievement for all students, we'd like to recognize school counselors for their specialized counseling skills and continuing efforts to reduce barriers to learning, help to provide equitable opportunities and access for every child, support during times of crisis, grief, and trauma, and expert post-secondary planning knowledge. Counseling staff provides the support necessary for all students to achieve at the highest level, real developmental areas. Thank you to our ECASD school counselors for helping every child. You make a difference and we thank you for your steadfast direction in service. At this time, Lisa Stee and Kylie Jong will be accepting the recognition certificate on behalf of the school counseling department.
Doctor Jong, I guess you're shy tonight.
I'm very shy.
At this time, we'll move on to our public forum. The board provides community members up to four minutes to address the board. Uh, the board will not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor any person connected with the school system in a public forum. We have one member of the public signed up for public comment tonight, and that is Nicole Eversen.
Nicole Glitch? Sending our message right now or unmute?
So Ms. Eversen, you need to unmute if you can hear me. I, I think our host has tried to send you a message. Apparently, Ms. Eversen is not responding, so we will move on through our public forum. I'm sorry. Ms. Eversen, please feel free to send your comments in via print for the board to hear. Then move on to our reports. We'll start as we always do with budget development. Commissioner Lyons?
Uh, yes, budget development met twice since our last board meeting on January 27th and then again on February 3rd. Uh, we are meeting more regularly now and we'll be meeting weekly. Our next meeting is February 9th. Uh, the February, the January 27th meeting really focused on a review of facility study. That facility study should be coming to the full board on, uh, on February 14th, I believe. 21st, okay. February 21st, uh, it would, would have been a sweetheart presentation. Most will be here for our policy workshop, so that will be a sweetheart. All right. It's optional, Doctor Johnson, please. So we did review the facility study at the January 27th meeting. And we did, um, a real in-depth discussion on collecting community feedback on referendum and facilities, including things like, um, the community forums and an upcoming survey at the February 9th. Includes my report.
Thank you. We'll move on to our legislative liaison, Doctor Johnson.
On January 25th, Wisconsin Houses of Legislature passed Assembly Bill 411 relating to anti-racism, anti-sexism people instruction and anti-racism, anti-sexism training for school employees. The Wisconsin Association of School Board opposes this bill on school grounds and for the aid penalty and lawsuit provisions and the lack of an exception for sharing copyrighted materials. On February 4th, Governor Tony Evers vetoed Assembly Bill 411, the bill solely by opponents as addressing critical race issue. The bill had a provided prohibited race and sex stereotypes and certain concepts in bringing taught in public school and charter schools with violations resulting in a loss of 10% of state budget. On January 27th, as part of an overall plan to address rising inflation and barriers to employment, the governor is proposing 611 million to K-12 education following new projections indicating the state will have a 3.8 billion surplus at the end of the 2021-23 by any. The proposal now heads to the legislature for consideration. On February 1st, the Assembly Education Committee held public hearings on the following bills, Assembly Bill 222, Senate Bill 238. This bill requires a school board, the operator of an independent charter school or the governing body of a private school participating in parental choice programs are in special needs classes composed in a conspicuous location in the public area of school building, a sign that contains a telephone number for the local county or state agency that is responsible for receiving reports of and conducting investigations regarding child abuse article. Assembly Bill 854, this bill eliminates the authority of the school board of a school district to approve or deny an owner-initiated petition to detach territory from the school district and attach the territory to an adjoining school district reorganization. Wisconsin Association of School Board opposes this bill because of support for local control that school board authority. Assembly Bill 893, this deal eliminates the sunset date on the dual enrollment credential grant program administered by higher educational aid boards. Wisconsin Association of School Board supports this bill. Assembly Bill 899, this deal provides that in order to graduate, the people also must earn at least one credit of personal financial literacy that includes financial mindset, education, and employment, money management, serving and investment, credit and debt, and risk management and insurance. Wisconsin Association of School Board opposes all unfunded mandate. Assembly Bill 903, another unfunded mandate. Each school board must submit an annual book to the DPI as it relates to their employment and curriculum for gifted and talented programs. On February 3rd, the state legislators joint committee on finance had approved the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction's revised ARPA elementary and secondary school emergency relief special funds three plan. The revision addresses certain objections raised by the U.S. Department of Education to the release of portions of the state special three funding allocation. On February 3rd, the GOP legislator unveiled their education reform agenda. The topics of the bills include parental will of rights, school choice expansion, Milwaukee public school reform, which means breaking down Milwaukee public schools into four, uh, smaller districts, school accountability reports, high reform and charter replication, and creation of statewide charter board, and property tax credit for virtual school. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor Johnson. We have one additional report tonight. That is the WASB delegate assembly. I was the WASB delegate for Eau Claire Area School District School Board at the delegate assembly on January, January, say 19th, but first day of the convention. It was January 19th. Attached to the board docs, you'll find my overall reports of the delegate assembly. Uh, all 10 of the proposed resolutions were passed. That includes say 22-08, which this board instructed me to vote against. Uh, however, that, that did pass. I've written just a slight amount on some of the discussion for each bill for, for members to review. And of course, members of the public who are interested. Uh, again, once again, uh, these resolutions become part of the WASB platform for advocacy at the state and national level. So for next year, if, if that's something that you're interested in, please think about volunteering to be the delegate. I did find it to be a pretty interesting experience to be there in person, of course, and get to chat with some other board members around me as each of the bills came up. Move on now to tonight's consent agendas. We'll start the superintendent's consent agenda for both. For each of the consent agendas, the board acts with one vote without discussion. Each of the items have been discussed at a previous meeting or the board has been provided information prior to the meeting. Tonight's superintendent's consent agenda includes human resources, employment report, and five-year capital project bids. I would hear a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda. Terry, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Zer? Commissioner Becca? Commissioner Clements?
Yes. Then move on to the board's consent agenda. Tonight's board consent agenda includes minutes of board meeting, January 17th, 2022, and a resolution in support of We Love Our Public Schools Week. I would hear a motion to approve the board's consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And opposed. At this time, we'll move on then to manage reserve for board action. We have a boundary request petition. And to do so, I need a motion to temporarily suspend our regular rules to allow our petitioner to speak and present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons.
Yes.
Commissioner Nardine.
Yes.
Commissioner Reser. Yes. Commissioner Vika. Commissioner Clements.
Yes.
All right, so then at this time, I will invite Mr. Brooks to come then, because then you can actually stand, you know, really, if you maybe would come just a little bit forward so you're closer to her, I might, you don't have to be at the...
I have some documents I can put underneath here.
Sure, that would, I think that's fine, and then I believe Kim Koehler has a bit after we're done.
Sorry.
No.
Meanwhile, it's on. We were looking at this earlier today, so apologies.
No.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
My apologies.
All right, thank you, board members and administration for hearing our annexation petition tonight. Before I get into the factors affecting this reorganization, I want to draw your attention to the, to this handout that I'm going to pass around.
Okay.
The agenda item details posted in your board docs that relate to this reorganization give the wrong tax amount of our property. I'll cover this area more in depth when I get to the fourth quarter, but just wanted to make sure that you understand that the revenue value for our home, if not $4,288.88, it is $2,216.95. The statute governing school district reorganization calls out specific criteria or factors to be considered as they affect the educational welfare of the students in the districts involved and the students residing on the proposed property. Each of these required elements will be addressed in their statute order, weighing the pros and cons for both districts and the students that reside on the proposed property. I'll be outlining the main points of factors one through five because they're relevant to our specific petition. Factors six and seven are not applicable, so I won't include information about those going forward. Factor one, the geographical and topographical characteristics of the affected school districts include in the estimated travel time to and from school for pupils in the school districts. When we examine the travel time and distance to and from school, the statute does not call out a minimum distance or time requirement that needs to be met in order for the distances or times to be considered significant. Therefore, any increase should be recognized as significant to the students it affects. Put simply, our property is closer to the schools in the Elk Mountain School District. It's 5.1 miles from Elk Mountain Elementary School, 5.3 miles from Elk Mountain Middle School, 5.2 miles from Elk Mountain High School. It's approximately seven to eight minutes of drive time by car to reach those schools. The current school attendance area for our kids in the Eau Claire district has them at Sherman Elementary, DeLong Middle School, and North Health High School. Sherman and DeLong are almost a quarter mile further from our property than their Eau Claire counterparts, and North High School is almost two miles further. It takes approximately nine to 12 minutes of drive time by car to reach those schools. Over the course of our kids' education from kindergarten through 12th grade, they would travel an additional 2,952 more miles to Eau Claire schools and spend an additional 17 to 18 and a half full days, 24-hour periods of their life traveling. Don't think these numbers are substantial. Round trip drive from Eau Claire to Miami, it's 2,912 miles, still 40 miles less than the extra miles our kids would travel to get to school. Trip to the moon and back takes about six days. They could visit the moon three times, still have time to spare. The first factor does not impact the educational welfare of the students in the Eau Claire area school district or the Elk Mountain district. The only students whose educational welfare is affected are those who reside in the proposed property. Reorganization decreases the miles they need to travel and the time spent traveling to and from school. The second factor to be considered relates to each district's ability to meet the educational needs for all the children residing in their districts, the educational programs currently offered by those districts, and their ability and commitment to meet those needs and continue to offer those programs. A reorganization does not impact either district's ability to meet the educational needs of other children residing in their school district, does not impact their ability to offer current educational programs to those children, and it does not impact their ability and commitment to meet those needs and continue to offer those programs. The only students whose educational welfare is impacted are those who reside on the proposed property. This reorganization allows the students residing on the proposed property full access to any and all programs they may need now or in the future, regardless of designated space assignments or enrollment caps that may present themselves. These programs are currently restricted because of a, because of our non-resident enrollment status and funding issues for open enrollment pupils when it comes to smaller districts. Factor 2M asks if the detachment will have an adverse effect on the program currently offered by detaching the district, including curriculum and extracurricular aspects. This reorganization does not affect those programs currently offered in the detaching district. The third factor is consideration of the testimony and written statements filed by the residents of the affected school districts. From 1900 until 1961, this section of land was part of Wheaton School District Number Two, the Elk Mountain area. Our house is marked with the yellow star right down here. In 1959, when the Wisconsin Legislature passed the school district consolidation law, it was decided that all of Wheaton school districts would be dissolved and annexed into nearby high school districts, either Chippewa Falls, Elk Mountain, or Eau Claire School District Number Five. In some areas, determining the new boundary lines was easy. Others were considered fringe properties, and deciding which district they would join was more difficult. To try to simplify the process, the Eau Claire School Board decided that the area most likely to be consolidated in the Eau Claire system would be those parts of the county now served by Memorial High School buses, and that the Eau Claire High School district will basically cover the tuition student area which it already serves. Our property, which was then part of a 480-acre farm owned by the Cook Champion L.C., all indicated in this gray area, was considered a fringe property, and although it is geographically closer to the Elk Mountain schools, 5.2 miles to Elk Mountain High School versus the 9.8 miles to Memorial, which in 1959 was the Eau Claire High School in question. The students who were living in the existing farmhouses, the main farmhouse is marked by the black star on the illustration, were paying tuition to attend Memorial High School. As such, the families had no objection to the proposed consolidation because it meant that they could stop paying tuition for their kids to attend high school, and the entire 480 acres was included into Eau Claire School District Number Five. The remaining portion of the four-square-mile section of land, the northwest corner labeled on the illustration colored in white, remained in the Eau Claire or Elk Mountain district, and that's this part right here. At the time, Homer DeLong, the Eau Claire superintendent acknowledged that some people on the fringe of the area to be consolidated into Eau Claire are uneasy about being placed in a high school district they don't want to be in. And these areas could petition themselves out after consolidation. Less than a month after the consolidation went into effect, the first fringe property filed an annexation petition to leave Eau Claire School District Number Five. In 1999 and 2000, 150 acres on the western side of the 480-acre farm were subdivided into five-acre parcels for new home construction. 26 of those lots, including ours, are all geographically closer to the schools in the Elk Mountain School District. We are the first residents of this five-acre parcel. As the owners of this fringe property, we're doing exactly what Homer DeLong expected unsatisfied residents to do after the consolidation, petition our property out. Today's district determining standards, which are not based on tuition areas from 60 years ago, this property should be returned to the Elk Mountain area district. We are well aware that our property is closer to the schools in Elk Mountain. This is one of the many reasons we've used the open enrollment program to send our kids to school in that district for the last 11 years. Unfortunately, policy changes that govern open enrollment programs have increased its limitations and have made it an unstable form of enrollment for the kids in our family. These changes put the education of our children at risk, and our enrollment status is no longer protected. We must provide our kids a quality and consistent education. They need access to all programs and services available on education, including those reserved for resident students. But if you remember, the importance of resident districts is to take care of the residents first. The third factor has no impact on the educational welfare of any students in the Eau Claire area school district or Elk Mountain school district. The only students whose educational welfare is impacted are those who reside on the proposed property. This reorganization guarantees enrollment status for our children, regardless of real or perceived educational needs. It provides them educational stability. It grants them access to all programs, regardless of caps, and it keeps them in the district they've always attended and together, they've always attended and together in that district. It erases the limitations of open enrollment, and it protects them from future policy changes that could threaten their enrollment status in other ways. Lastly, it saves us from having to continue contract outside services. The fourth factor outlined in the statute is the estimated fiscal effect of the proposed reorganization on the affected school districts, including the effect of the apportionment of assets and liabilities. Basically, it's the criteria that talks about where the money goes and how it changes things for each district. As I explained in the beginning, the agenda items detail included on the district website, which are no doubt also informed of you now, show that the district would forfeit $4,288.88. I said earlier, this amount is not, it's not correct. Okay, $4,288.88 is the total amount of taxes we pay. A portion of that money goes to the Chippewa County, the town of Wheaton, and CBTIC. And the handout I gave you is a printout from the Chippewa County web portal. It very clearly breaks down our tax amounts. It was free and easy to search this information. Probably didn't take me more than two minutes. Rather disappointed that you were not provided the correct dollar amount, but we are talking about a change in money. It's difficult to assess finances using inflated and incorrect data. This is our property tax bill. The amount that you have on the last page in your handout is highlighted in yellow is the amount that, again, the Eau Claire area school district receives from our property. You can see very clearly between our tax bill and also the Chippewa County web portal, those amounts are both $2,216.95. In 2021, if we take that $2,216.95 of our total property tax bill, your district executive summary report shows that you had 11,036 students enrolled in the district. This equates to about 20 cents of spending per student. Your 2021-2022 budget adoption document from October of 2021 shows total revenue received by the Eau Claire district for this school year Our $2,216.95 in property tax makes up an insignificant 0.0012% of that amount. The Eau Claire area school district has shown a huge increase in total revenue dollars over the last few years. The figures in the top table show that for 2018-2019 school year, revenue versus enrollment equated to $12,329 per student. In 2019 to 2020, it was $14,226 per student. In 2020 to 2021, it was $16,479 per student, and for this year, it shows $15,793 per student. A portion of these multi-million dollar increases came from new home developments within the Eau Claire school district. The bottom table shows that over the last three years, the property tax revenue taken in by the district has increased by $1,439,648. The amount of revenue associated with this proposed property is so insignificant to this district that it continually is being replaced by revenues generated in new developments. One new house in Briar Hill, Trillium, Aspen Meadows, Winter Haven, or any other developments currently under construction completely absorbs it. The tax revenue associated with our property has no impact on the Eau Claire area school district. Every year, the Eau Claire area's school district sends millions of dollars out of the district to other educational institutions, including private schools. These are the kind of dollars that impact the educational welfare of students in this district, not $2,216.95 in our property tax. You'll see here in the chart, I show that growing amount of money that has continued to leave the Eau Claire area school district since 2021. the Eau Claire Area School District since twenty seventeen. Folks, that's a big impact. Now, if we take our two thousand, two hundred sixteen dollars, ninety-five cents in tax revenue value to the Elk Mountain District, let me understand the values may not match exactly, okay, but we divide that by one thousand, two hundred and seven students. That equates to approximately a dollar eighty-four per student. Spending. Total revenue shown for the Elk Mountain District is just sixteen million, three hundred seven thousand, one hundred thirty-nine dollars. So our property tax revenue represents a point zero one four percent of that amount. The benefit this tax revenue can offer Elk Mountain is over nine times greater than what it can offer Eau Claire. It has the potential to positively impact the educational welfare of every student in that district, including our kids. Obviously, we have school age kids, so in addition to our property tax dollars, we have to address the per student aid each district receives from the state. The fact line on this pie chart represents the impact of the total revenue associated with our property, how that affects the educational welfare of the students in the Eau Claire District. Okay, these charts show side-by-side comparisons of the revenue impact for both districts. As you can clearly see, the revenue associated with our property has a much greater impact on the educational welfare of the students in the Elk Mountain District. It is tangible, apparent, and far exceeding any impact to the Eau Claire District. Here's another illustration. Showing the district comparisons, the blue wedge is Elk Mountain and the yellow is Eau Claire. Again, quite clear where the value is much more significant. Since state statute requires examination of both sides of the assets and liabilities, it's very easy to see the revenue associated with this organization, if that's the Elk Mountain District. The students it serves, nine times more than the impact it has on the Eau Claire District and the students it serves. Factor four has no impact on the educational welfare of the students in the Eau Claire District. It has a substantial impact on the educational welfare of the students in Elk Mountain. And it also impacts the educational welfare of the students who reside on the proposed property. Allowing the district, district educating them to receive more money, providing their education. The fifth factor to acknowledge is whether the proposed reorganization will make any part of the school's district. Tenuous. It's important to realize that in nineteen ninety-six, Wisconsin Supreme Court case of Stockbridge versus DPI stands as the legislative landmark for the statutory interpretation which allows the creation of island parcels. Statute one one seven point one two does not require a detaching parcel to border the school district of an of an attachment, except in the case of union high school districts. Which the Eau Claire School District and Elk Mountain are not. This just shows a map of the Eau Claire School District. Uh, the Eau Claire School District currently has at least thirteen islands inside other school districts, thirteen. And at least seven islands within their own district. You could see many island parcels on both the western and southern portions. The distances these parcels are from the mainland vary from as little as point three miles up to four point two miles. Our property is point three two miles from the district line. Simply put, the yellow stars are driveway. The red star is where the district line is. Many of the more than twenty islands currently associated with the Eau Claire District are more than this point three two miles. Here's another easier picture to show you just how close we are talking. I can stand at the end of my driveway and I can see the district line. This island parcel falls well within the distance range of other islands associated with both districts and is in fact closer to its proposed mainland than all but one already existing island. Creating an island parcel does not affect the educational welfare of any students in either district. However, creating an island parcel affects the educational welfare of the students residing in this proposed property. An island parcel makes the students Elk Mountain District residents, the status grants them access to all available programs in the school district they are currently attending, and it sends their full student funding to the school district they are currently attending. Increasing that district's educational revenue, it saves the students who live on this property mileage and travel time. And lastly, it guarantees their enrollment status regardless of future law or policy changes. The final two factors, number six and seven, which address the socioeconomic and referendum portions of the criteria are not relevant to this reorganization. If the factors that are relevant to this reorganization are carefully examined, they indicate that our property is physically closer to the Elk Mountain Schools and an overall travel time is decreased by our attendance there. Our chosen district needs our residency in order to commit to providing certain programs. And our property has a history of being in the Elk Mountain District and was only put into Eau Claire because of tuition payments sixty years ago. Open enrollment pitfalls have made annexation the only guaranteed form of enrollment for our kids. There is no tangible financial impact on the Eau Claire District. And island parcels already exist that are associated with the Eau Claire District. Creating this one has zero impact on the educational welfare of other students in the Eau Claire District. If the criteria required by statute are carefully examined, all angles which are the impacts of the educational welfare of the students currently attending Eau Claire Area School District, the students currently attending Elk Mountain School District, and the students residing on the proposed property, they show that this reorganization has zero impact on the educational welfare of the students residing and attending in the Eau Claire Area School District. A positive increase in the educational welfare of the students residing and attending in the Elk Mountain District and an extreme increase in the educational welfare of their students residing on the proposed property. Only one criteria in the statute has anything to do with the Eau Claire Area School District. If the legislature wanted school districts to only look at one factor and one district, there wouldn't be an additional criteria listed. There would just be one factor. And the statute would say, only look at this factor and only look at this district. But that's not what the statute says. Statue would, the statue would require an examination of both districts. State law requires reorganizations to be looked at on the merits of the entire impact, not the effects of one criteria on one district. We came here prepared to examine information related to the educational welfare of all the students as it would pertain by this, and it would as it would be affected by this reorganization. We've done that by providing a history by providing history, maps, charts, financial information, breakdown, personal testimony, side-by-side comparisons, and evidence that this reorganization does not affect the educational welfare of the students in your district. What it does improve the educational welfare of the students in the Elk Mountain District. And lastly, those students residing on the proposed property. This chart shows what, if any, effect our reorganization has on the three areas to consider. I can assure you, our family has tried other ways of securing enrollment of our children so that they have access to the programs and the services they need. Those avenues are nowhere. I wouldn't be here if there was a route left to take because the truth be told, this process is a complete nightmare. I know, because it's our third petition. Because of this, we've been advocating for Assembly Bill eight fifty-four and Senate Bill eight oh eight, which seeks changes in the annexation process to help kids and families expand their opportunities for educational choices and ensure that all of the criteria in the statute is considered by both districts. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have or clarify any areas of confusion. And I would ask that if there is questions that come up after Ms. Kohler presents, that if I could provide some clarification to ensure that the board has accurate information in light. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Books. Or you can, from there you can call up, you can, however you like.
So as you know, um, as Mr. Book said, there were, um, seven factors to consider when a petition is filed. Distance, educational impact, uh, for students, testimony, residence, fiscal impact, non-contiguous boundaries, socioeconomic and racial composition, and then results of the referendum. I think it's important as we look at, um, these two those factors that are sure to extrapolate any set of data for one of those questions over multiple years, that we would, um, do that same for any set of data over multiple years. Um, so based on the considerations that Mr. Books presented tonight, the administration does recommend that the petition is denied um, based on the following reasons. Um, first, the the Eau Claire Area School District can, um, our educational program can meet the needs of, um, the students at his residence. And we are willing to meet the needs of the students at his residence. Um, the, in addition, the current petition, while it would impact, um, certainly the children that live at the residence now, any, um, any change in the district for that property would impact all students that lived at that property in the future. So um, I think if we look at it long-term, changing it permanently for the property is something, uh, for us to consider. Second, um, the petition would intentionally create an island um, within the Eau Claire Area School District, and certainly Mr. Books mentioned that we do have some islands in the district. Um, but we do not intentionally create those. In fact, our conversations with neighboring districts tend to be, how do we, how do we eliminate islands? Um, not, um, not on creating more islands, but reducing the number of islands. So create non-contiguous properties, um, within the district is not something that we would recommend through administration. Um, the distance between the residence and the schools, um, certainly, Mr. Books presented some information tonight. When, when we simply did a Google Maps, our numbers came up a little bit different, but I think comparable nonetheless, you know, um, as far as, um, the distance between um, the residence, um, that we're talking about in any of the schools, um, I think um, Mr. Books had mentioned significant distance, um, I would just describe the distances as comparable. Um, the resulting financial impact that was referenced, um, I think the number was two thousand, two hundred and sixteen, and certainly I can defer to Abby on any questions about finance. Um, I think there's probably maybe a tax credit somewhere in there that might change that number a little bit, but again, that impact, um, would continue in perpetuity. So for one year, it might be two thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars, but if we extend that, um, over the the educational years of the current residents and, um, through really the lifetime of any property taxes collected on that property, um, the district would be impacted. And then, um, finally, um, open enrollment is a good short-term solution for a family that lives at the resident that, rather than a permanent solution, um, for the property and, um, I think ultimately, Mr. Books' concern is an open enrollment concern and administration would encourage him to share his concerns about the open enrollment process and some of the, I don't remember the term that he used, um, for some of the the nuances of open enrollment, but, um, you know, I know that that is concerning to some families, and I think ultimately that's probably what this, this is also about. Would you want to address the tax?
So just a, um, clarification for the board. Um, the executive summary on board docs does state the full tax bill and in the information that was provided, I believe the correct tax amount was provided to you. Um, so that was a clerical error on our part, and, um, we believe the information you have is correct.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you, Abby. At this time, I will open the floor to questions from the board. Commissioner Zer.
Um, Kim, you could answer this. Um, what is precedent for detachment? Like, has that been granted and what were circum around that in the past?
Are you talking specific to this petition?
I'm talking specific. Is is there precedent in our district? Like, I don't know the history of of families who have petitioned in sort of, you know, fringe property like this. Is there, is there precedent for the school board granting petitions of this, of this sort? Do you know the answer to that?
Um, so, uh, the position that I'm in right now, I've been in here in this position for four years, and in the four years that I've been in this position, um, there has not been that, I don't believe, any, um, any attachment or detachment, um, that's been approved, but I'm going to ask Abby because, um, she's been in her position longer, so she may know.
Thank you. Um, to answer the question, Commissioner Zer, there was, um, some clerical pieces that were detected by the county, that there were some changes that needed to be made, and so there was, um, there was two or three properties that were impacted, and so they had to come before the board to fix that. That's the only time in the length that I've been in my position that that was approved, and that was strictly due to the county. Um, identifying this errors and the errors were made, I believe, back in the early days. And so it was cleaning up the tax records from that. Other than that, the other petitions that have come before the board, since I've been in this position, have, um, been approved by one district and not approved by the other district.
We'll have discussion from the board at this point. Other comments or questions? Victor Clemens, and then we'll go to Commissioner Alliance.
Question procedure. Can I ask Mr. Books a question?
Yes.
Mr. Books, um, one of the criteria is that the educational needs of the children is adding. Um, essentially are not, they're not being met, um, by the district that you're physically located in. Is there a program or need that you don't believe your children's are able to achieve if they're attending Eau Claire School?
I'm gonna, uh, I guess I'll pose it this way. Um, in Wisconsin, we have the open enrollment program and school choice. Um, you know, our school choice is to to put our kids in that district, um, that they're in. Um, what you are basically asking me to do is is give up my school choice in order to put them in a district that I don't want to put them in because of where my property lands. You know, policies and laws change all the time. And all I'm doing is making sure that I don't get sideswiped by another policy or law change. Open enrollment is certainly there, but it's not perfect. And anybody that, that thinks it is, it's just not been on the, a good understanding of what really goes on. It's great for districts like the Oakley District, large districts, got a lot of facilities and can handle, you know, basically balance any of those risks out. You go to any of your smaller districts that are, take the Dunn St. Croix Conference or any of them, take a look at the policies that are out there. It's a completely different situation. Okay, because they don't have all these facilities to be able to ascend those two. And at the end of the day, the resident are the number one from that perspective. So I don't want to get into this comparison between open enrollment and that it be available, it's available, and I could take advantage of that. Because, yeah, we are using open enrollment. What I am looking to do is safeguard my kids so that they never get sideswiped by law or policy again. And the only way to do that is through annexation. Right? I can't guarantee that any other way.
Commissioner Lyons.
My question was very much along the lines of, of Josh as of Commissioner Clemens. So the programs at the Oakley School District have met the educational needs. I, I think I heard that. My follow-up is have you been denied open enrollment up to this point?
No, I have not been denied open enrollment at this point. But I am contracting out for services to ensure that my kid gets what they need.
Dr. Beaker, Dr. Johnson, anything that you'd like to comment on? I just haven't had the opportunity. I know you're always able to jump in. I just want to make sure before we look forward. Have a good one. Commissioner Zer.
I just want to say that I understand where you're coming from. I, as far as open enrollment concern comes in, I have, my oldest child is enrolled in the Augusta School District, and she is at the Wildland School at Beaver Creek, and she has been for two years now. And I understand where the boundaries between, you know, what you can get for services in a district when you're, you know, in your home district versus what happens when you open enroll out of a district, because that's, you know, the program that, that, you know, your child prefers or, or a school that you're looking to, to fulfill the educational needs of your child. That said, I, I'm very concerned about using a petition for detachment or attachment on either side of that coin as a mechanism to get those services, because then I think what happens is, I mean, I can, I live two houses from Regis Trackfield. I can throw a football into the Altoona School District. You know, I would be really concerned that, that we would start using attachment and detachment as, as a mechanism to, to acquire certain services in, in our open enrollment districts that we perhaps don't have access to. And I just don't know that that's a good precedent. You know, I understand where you're coming from. I don't know that it's a good precedent that I, that I could support. And I just want to empathize and then say that unfortunately, I can't, I can't support it.
It's unfortunate because we're at round three here. I think you guys have set a precedence here on what it takes to get here. This was not approved on the first one. It was not approved on the second one. I guarantee it, nobody in their right mind is going through this three times. So if you're concerned that somebody is going to be open season on annexations, folks, there's been nineteen property annexations across the entire state of Wisconsin in the last five years that have actually resulted in property transfers. And six of them were because the districts could work out a property transfer between them to come to an agreement, something I also proposed in previous years and was straight up denied. Never even came to this board. So that's where it's a little frustrating on my side when I'm trying to present solutions that would amicably make this work for everybody. I guess I, I don't see it being open season. And if we're worried about precedence, there's twenty islands that exist. I would argue that precedence was set when you created those twenty islands. Why isn't my island good enough too? Now we want to say my island's not good enough.
So seeing no other for the floor, it's probably appropriate to move on to board action on this. I was on the board the last time that we had a petition. I was, I, that includes, that was Mr. Books, was among those. I was not the president. I did go back and look at the board action at that time. The board motion at that time was to approve the property, to approve the petition. And then the board would vote, you know, yes to approve, no to deny. Making such a motion does not commit you to a vote one way or the other, but that was cleaner than, I think, the board at that time. If I recall correctly, and Dr. Beaker or Commissioner Lyons, you can remind me of the, the idea was that way you know you're voting yes to approve and no to deny, rather than having to sort of reverse it as a motion to deny, having to say yes when you mean no. So now maybe I've made it less clear, but what I guess we need to do at this time, I would like to request a motion to approve the petition and a second, and then at that time, we can hold a vote, again, yes to approve, no to deny. So is there such a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve petitioner Kenneth and Kelly Books' request, alter the school district boundaries for the address.
That's probably enough, and we have the information there. Do we have a second? Second by Dr. Beaker. Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? We will call the question once again. The vote is yes to approve, no to deny. Terry, if you would, please conduct the roll call vote.
Commissioner Johnson.
This is to detach the property.
Commissioner Lyons.
No.
Commissioner Nordin.
No.
Commissioner Zer, no. Commissioner Beaker. Commissioner Clemens.
Thank you. The petition is denied. Thank you, Mr. Books. At this time, we'll move on to monitoring district results. We have tonight three operational expectations policies. The first is the full report for OE twelve asset protection, following our current method to ensure that we have the best information on our year-end summary statements. It will fall to Commissioner Lyons to take the notes on items that the board finds particularly good, areas in need of improvements, and areas that there are gaps or that the board would like to have additional items for the next go-around. At this time, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Johnson for the presentation of OE twelve asset protection.
Good evening, and thank you. First, with respect to operational expectation twelve asset protection, looking as a whole, I certify the preceding information is accurate and the district is in compliance. With my summary statement, we're in full compliance with this. Abby Johnson and the funding for Bitten Services team, who can lend us help in this, obviously. As you could tell from, in all, we're in compliance, and I think to support the board a bit, we did not place many pages of documents. We hope that this was easy to read, easy to follow with, with the adequate evidence, sharing that looking. Many policies, for example, six forty-one, six sixty, management of funds, six sixty-five, seven eighty. We're following those policies, and with any of those questions or any concerns with our compliance or any pieces of the evidence, I'm sure Abby would be able to, to answer that for you. I think that last time to discuss the first draft of this, maintaining the property and casualty insurance coverage on district property, when it's equal to one hundred percent of replacement value. Abby has plenty of discussions annually with our insurance carriers, make sure that's up to date. Finally, and there was some protections as well, at the very end, ensuring that all personnel who have access to material amounts of district and school funds that were bonded and proper accounting and recording for our capital assets through those policies. There is a glossary of terms, obviously, but again, very happy with compliance with all of those indicators for each one of the sub.
Thank you, Superintendent Johnson. At this time, any comments or questions for Superintendent Johnson regarding OE twelve? Hearing done, is there a motion to approve OE twelve? Moving seconded, any discussion on the motion? Let's see, I have some things to write, Commissioner Lyons. Really glad that this is in full compliance, and it's exciting to have not a lot to talk about on, on an OE for the night. All those in favor of the approval of OE twelve, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Approved, that'll be my shortest summary statements, and I look forward to getting those notes. I'm not even going to throw it to you, Commissioner Lyons, to sum up, of course. Thank you. Move directly then on to our first drafts for the evening. The first is OE eight's communication with the community. Superintendent Johnson.
Thank you. Looking forward to the discussion and direction I need to be taking, and my team needs to be taking OE eight and OE nine this evening. For communication with the community, my interpretation, you expect me to communicate openly and consistently with all district families, historically marginalized communities and community stakeholders regarding the condition and direction of the district. This needs to occur regularly, make sure that they receive that information concerning activities to inform and build that public confidence. And I can tell not just by OE eight, but other OEs, that the board values engaging our district stakeholders to discuss interesting issues and provide information about our vision and direction to help build that, to help build that trust. So anyway, I just wanted to, to share in looking through other districts, Sun Prairie, Racine, Shippensburg Falls, Altoona, very helpful in glean from each one of those. But the first, you know, with the indicators, with that timely flow of communication, information with OE one, again, to build understanding and support for our district efforts. No more, I think, no more important than our upcoming work with the referendum, obviously. But the first indicator, you know, Skyward information, monthly. Second indicator with advisory councils. The third would be the Oakley Voice Mechanism, and that's very easily shared where Terry Grisbane and I can, can glean those, Kim Kohler has assisted in those as well to track that data. And then, you know, the timeliness of responding to people, that form of communication. If I cannot answer it, or a member of the executive team cannot answer it, we share it with, with a response to a person who can. For the second OE, communicating those decisions would effectively as far advanced as the decision point or implementation as possible. We need to have that on our district website would be the first. Secondly, you know, sharing that with the media, of course. We get a lot of help from Terry Piper Thompson regarding those issues. All of our Board of Education business meeting agendas and materials and minutes are placed on our website, posted. And then the fourth, you know, in certain emergency situations like cold weather and climate weather, snow, you name it. You know, sharing things like we had done in, in December to, for families to be prepared, but then, you know, explaining the day of or the morning of five thirty, six o'clock, so that people can prepare when there is that type of event. Third, developing incorporating structures to communicate with historically marginalized communities and seek input from a diverse array of voices. This comes up in other OEs as well. And I've learned through what you've shared with me and those other OEs, what you expect in trying to engage those communities as well. We need for communication strategies for our district to continuously improve. You know, we've got an online presence, simulating correspondence to families and other community groups, seeking input from others, in an orderly process to that messaging throughout the district. Had quite a bit of conversation, and I think when I arrived here in July of twenty twenty, that was something that I learned, that order and that flow. And it'll come up in evidence in the future. But when you don't have a system where it's board, then from what I call system leaders, then staff, then families, and then media, if any of that order is changed, there's confusion, there's questions, there, you know, there's a lot of frustration. And I think we've done fairly well in the last year and a half to do that. But that was for indicator four, you know, that's, that's the process that we've been using since I've arrived, because I learned that was a concern. Eighty-five, ensure those integration of strategies across all levels of the district. I think we can prove by, and share with the evidence, with indicators one, two, and three, you know, there's a purpose and strategy to the communication across our levels of the district. You know, and then there's that order and process. And then third, to explain and to share branding and style guides, guides and social media guidelines, and how important those are as well. So I hope that was a brief enough sharing of, of each OE in subheading plus the indicators. More than happy to take questions. If I can't answer it, I'd be able to, to ask our executive team members or other folks. And also definitely I'll take advice on that first draft and to make it more robust. If we need to add an indicator, absolutely. So I'm willing to take questions and comments from our board members.
Thank you, Superintendent Johnson. Comments and questions from the board and student representatives. Dr. Johnson.
Yeah, one suggestion I would make is that eight-three indicator of warrants. Try to be, this includes the system as possible when identifying key stakeholders. I would like to see the, the key stakeholders included in indicator one, eight-three-one. Also included in the indicator stakeholders for indicator two and eight-one. Because I, 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 I think what's missing in indicator two under eight-one, we, we have to, we have to, I mean, how we should start now is also the feedback from students. How, how are the, the things that we're doing effective? You know, I, one of the, one of the things that really spoke to me, I was reviewing emails, but the last year, student representative groups, I think we, we was answering the charge to give us some feedback via questionnaire that was done or survey that responses that were done at both North and Moana High School, and our representatives came back and asked you, so it's just that communication, the effort that you make also to the students to know that not only at the higher level are you there, that you're going to actually either via representation and or review into schools to really take into consideration comments and feedback they have, even also via email communication from the students as well.
Well, that's a mistake I'm in, Paul, as one and two, but from what you explained, so, yeah. Thank you.
Commissioner Zer.
I shared some concerns, but no, I'm just going to say them out loud. And you do it, do it much well, but I think, and this is just something that, that I have been considering as far as communication, when we're looking at our board communication as well. But when we say, when we say two-way dialogue, that, that, we say that a lot in our That we say that a lot in our policies and I think that that needs definition for me. What what is that? What does that look like? Um, that's facilitation, right? That's leadership and that and that that comes with a a certain type of meeting or a certain type of structure that we're putting. In the conversation that we have, and I want to make sure that that if there's opportunity for us to define that. Uh, whether that's through an indicator or through narrative. Um, of just, you know, there's a lot of great research out there about how we lead student groups and how we facilitate those things and and I would like to know how we are doing that. Uh, so that we can monitor the success of that. Um, but a- again, in in eight point one, eight point three, uh, when we talk about marginalized groups. Um, you know, I I think that you hear, you know, you've, I said, who are they? And you gave me some great, um, you know, feedback approvals are right now, but I think what I would like to know is what are we missing? I want to see, um, you know, what what is our, what are what are our targets? What are we going towards? What what should we be looking for in a year? Um, what do you see as potentially like, hey, these are strong and developing and these ones are are struggling. I'm working on that. I I would like to see maybe perhaps where were we. In that, maybe some community building, both as a board and, um, you know, watch the administration do it as well. Um, and then eight point four, this is the last, um, question I had or or concern on the, with the glitch. Was I I think that I will specifically be looking for evidence. Um, of how we respond to large or seemingly large issues, um, for the public, so. Proactive messaging or messaging that responds to, you know, large community concerns. I think. You know, when we implement something like EMLSS or when when we restructure so that, you know. There was more equitable, um, distribution of, uh, you know, of students within, um. Or the curriculum so that students, you know, are getting the the most out of our curriculum rather than, you know, being tracked in specific directions. You know, how how are we messaging when we make those big changes out into our community so that the message stays positive and we control that? I think that's really, um, that's really important. Uh, and then how are we, you know, how are we responding when when things come in, looking to large, large district movements? So those are kind of my my three big ones.
Thank you. Yeah, just me some. Dr. Beaker, and then we'll, uh, back to Dr. Johnson. I have you on that.
Um, so on this first read and seeing the indicators, I actually was hard pressed in, uh. Identifying advantages to keeping this as a separate OE from OE seven, treatment of the community. So I wondered why, why the, you know, at hindsight, you know. Um, but maybe Superintendent Johnson, your experience in creating, you know, and developing indicators. Could there be advantages to merging and integrating accounts?
Yes, I think so. Um, because two of the districts I talked to said that. They had one of those, the treatment slash communication with the community as one OE. So, uh, for example, I think this is just one example, but, um, in speaking with. Dr. Leopolas from Altoona and she had worked at Chippewa Falls as well, where. One district had separated them, the other had combined them, and it's. And I saw the same type of thing with Racine where it was more combined. So that's just an example. I I think they they could be. Um, because I I found myself, hey, wait a second here, OE seven, is this somewhat similar treatment versus communication? Um, I mean, I think they could, but obviously, you know, thank you for asking my. I thought on that, but obviously this is a public policy, so, you know, that would be something we would maybe discuss on February fourteenth. But that's a great question. I I did find that. Um. For example, and we're seeing that bears, kind of seen them that, it's like, oh, they're they're pieces of treatment and the pieces of the communication part.
I couldn't see it going into it. I can only see it now that.
I know, exactly.
I remember our discussion as to whether to have them as separate or together when you and Commissioner Lyons and I were were drafting. The the set of OEs, um, so Terry, if you would, you know, add that to the running list of policy considerations. Looking at the, uh, this is a good time to remind the board that, and our student reps, we'd like to join and observe. Uh, we will have an optional work session through board next Monday, seven to nine P M. to consider policy changes that we've talked about throughout the year. Uh, I don't, because this will be a larger, like, if we did decide to merge. These two would be a larger rewrite and some work to do. I don't think we'll we'll get very far into discussing this, given the already, the list that we already have. But we might have an opportunity as a board to say, is this something we want to pursue? And then be able to put together, you know, a few of us two drafts. Uh, but so Terry, if you just make a note of that and then we'll, uh, try to add that as we plan, at at least to to get the board's, uh. Discussion on whether or not we should try to move forward with considering combining these two. Representative Logan, and then we'll come back to you, Dr. Johnson.
I just want to make a note that the student representatives still don't have access to these types of documents, which makes providing feedback during the meeting normally difficult.
On our agenda setting tomorrow is to discuss the disposition of that. Thank you. Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, I, I was the other thing that I thought was, uh, kind of kind of missing here, uh, from overall. Where will it be? I think one of the continuous, uh, frustration and feedback from some, uh. Community members is kind of, uh, the timeliness of when, uh, we we seek feedback. With survey. And then the re, uh. Distribution of those particular results and communication about those results. And so, you know, I. It I think it's frustrating, I think, sometimes as parents to be asked to contribute, uh, uh, input and then. Those results not being shared in a timely manner. So do do you have a vision somewhere in there that indicators that you. You have under, uh, uh, one of the OEs where that like that that timeliness of like, uh, for me. Uh, you know, I think to Commissioner Zer's point, uh, authentic two-way communication. You're asking for information communicated via information as related, but the survey is. Authentic communication, two-way communication, where the results of a survey is this. And as an administration, we're going to use this information towards these type of decisions, but in a timely manner. Uh, and not only for community, I looked, uh, last year as I was, I I was able to get around. Get around to schools and talk with teachers, also the internal surveys that we deal with that particular staff. And and staff being left in the dark in terms of what what's happened to that particular, uh, particular information. So I. I would like to see and or as as evidence, you know, kind of. What what do we do with some of those internal external, uh, ways of communicating with our community as well as their staff and. Turning that, uh, turning that around in a sufficient.
Commissioner Zer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. But I don't feel as bad for knowing that light was on and looking for others who hadn't spoken.
Of course, yeah.
No problem. Other comments or questions? Seeing none, then we'll go ahead and move on to OE nine, communication with the board. Once again, Superintendent Johnson, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Um, much like with OE eight, extremely, uh. Extremely important with communication. Um, this one, I. I think because it's pretty robust, um, I think fifteen different subheadings. Um. Been looking at a variety of other districts and then looking back at notes from from last year. Um, I thought it would help if I kind of, you know, the board values the following items. I took all the bullet points. Um, but I thought that it would help us in this OE nine.